Meeting is in compliance with the open public meeting law and has been duly advertised in the newspaper as an official meeting. Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Present.
Mr. McCarron?
Present.
Mrs. Barocas?
Present.
Dr. Osmond?
Present.
Mrs. Rivera?
Present.
Mrs. Cass?
Present.
And Mr. Palmieri?
Present. Before the approval of the agenda, I turn it over to Ms. Primili.
Thank you, Mr. Palmieri. I would like to administratively remove 9B, the Treasurer and Board Secretary's report, and also Finance Number Four. Both of those items will be placed on the August agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Primili. I need a motion for approval of the agenda with addendums.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barocas?
Yes.
Dr. Osmond?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
And Mr. Palmieri?
Yes. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Ms. Primili for her Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and happy summer. Although the weather's been a little funky on us, a lot of rain, but it is nice to have a little bit slower pace with summer. I just wanted to remind the parents and the board that we still have students here with us. Over the summer, we have our extended school year programs that are currently running, filled with students, and also they're very off to a great start. We also have our summer childcare camp is running, and the students are enjoying the activities and the trips. So we still have students with us, but they're having a great time. I wanted to also mention that this week, our administrative team, this is the time that we all get together as a whole group for setting goals and planning, doing training, articulation, and from there, they take that work and then they continue to plan and prepare for our staff and our students returning in the fall. Today, they were treated to Mr. Zittimer's legal updates and trainings and presentation, which we all very highly value. So it's been a busy week. As a reminder to parents and to students, we have our optional summer practice work is posted on the district website. It's important to keep up all the skills over the summer. We just ask that you kind of find that balance between having a lot of fun and doing some practice with reading, writing, math, and just keeping up your skills. So when you return in the fall, we're ready to roll. In regards to our budget for the 23-24 school year and the loan request, I spoke with the county superintendent today. There is still no news on whether it has been approved, but he did tell me that it's at the Treasury Department and it's being reviewed. We'll keep you informed as soon as we hear anything. So tonight, we have a few presentations this evening. We have our, first, we have our District Violence and Vandalism and HIB Report, Period Two, report that goes from January to June, and Mr. Maluski is here this evening to present that report, so we'll start with Mr. Maluski. Director of Security, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Primili. Good evening to all of our board members and everyone in attendance tonight. The first report I'd like to present is our semi-annual report for violence, vandalism, substance abuse, and weapons offenses, as Ms. Primili said, for Report Period Two, which is January to June of 2023. As I've mentioned previously, a little background and overview, the state of New Jersey began collecting data in some of our most serious student misconduct areas, which include violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, weapons, and substance abuse cases. The chart up on the screen has a breakdown. We did include data from 2019, which was pre-COVID, to use as a comparison. We've also included the first report period for this school year, some of the incidents that have occurred in our school district, and the column to the far right is Report Period Two, which are the numbers in regards to Report Period Two regarding violence, vandalism, our HIB cases, our weapons cases, and our substance abuse cases. Just a little clarification regarding the HIB numbers, there's always a question that comes up often regarding alleged and confirmed. I'd just like to provide some clarity on that. Our school district is required to report our HIB investigations upon their conclusion under the reporting requirements, and we're required to list them under two different classifications, one of two different classifications. The first classification is HIB alleged. HIB alleged is defined by the Department of Education as an allegation of HIB that was investigated by the school. There was no evidence found to suggest that an act of harassment, intimidation, and bullying occurred, and this conclusion was confirmed or affirmed by the Board of Education. The second classification would be HIB confirmed. This would be an allegation of harassment, intimidation, and bullying that was investigated by the school, and there was evidence found to suggest that an act of bullying was committed, and this was affirmed by the Board of Education. So I just wanted to provide some clarification. That question does come up frequently, and I'm more than happy to answer any other questions regarding that topic. The next slide, please. Our violence reports at our elementary-level schools for Report Period Two. As you can see, at just all of our elementary schools, we've had zero incidents regarding fights, simple assaults, threats, and sexual offenses. Regarding harassment, intimidation, and bullying cases, we did have 36 total investigations at the elementary level. Again, just to provide clarification, these are the total number of cases at those schools. So for example, the Crawford School had nine investigations conducted, and those investigations were broken down upon the findings into the alleged classification and the confirmed classification. Next slide. At our secondary schools, our middle schools and our high schools, we did have 10 overall fights combined at the secondary schools. Simple assaults, there were a total of five. Threats, there was one incident, and zero cases regarding sexual offenses. And again, our HIB numbers, there were a total of 43 harassment, intimidation, and bullying investigations, which were then broken down into the alleged classification and the confirmed classification based on the findings of the investigation. Vandalism and substance abuse incidents for Report Period Two. Vandalism cases, there were six incidents at Memorial High School. There was one incident at Liberty. Two incidents at McAuliffe. All of our other schools reported zero incidents of vandalism. Regarding our substance cases, regarding students under the influence, there is a breakdown again, pre-COVID 2019, to give you an idea on our numbers. The far-right-hand column are our numbers for Report Period Two of this year. There were 24 incidents regarding marijuana with students being under the influence. Alcohol, there was one. Prescription drugs, zero. Incidents regarding substances that were suspected where the student refused an exam, there was one incident. Down at the bottom of the page, substance possession incidents. We had a total of 23 incidents for this Report Period regarding marijuana cases. Drug paraphernalia, 11. Alcohol, there were zero. And any other unauthorized prescription drugs, there were zero cases. Weapons offenses, these are all of our schools. There were a total of three cases reported for this Report Period. On the left is a definition or a breakdown of what is defined as weapons, and also some other important information down at the bottom regarding other types of items that we may come across in our schools and what they are considered. Action taken by our school district, we had a total of 41 incidents where the police were notified. There was no complaint filed. There were zero incidents where we had complaints filed by the police. In-school suspensions, there were seven and a half days of overall suspension that was implemented. And out-of-school suspension, there were a total of 331 days of discipline that were implemented in the cases. Impacted students, for our Report Period, there were 82 students that were impacted by these incidents, and student victims, there were seven. Next slide. And in closing, we will continue to create a safe district and a school environment, you know, bringing our school district safety teams and school anti-bullying specialists together to review our data, using this data to plan programs and inform practices and approaches in our curriculum, continuing to build strong partnerships with the Jackson Police Department and our local law enforcement, providing training, which is very important for our school administrators, on effective prevention and response to violence, vandalism, and substance use, and finally, educating all of our stakeholders on how they can make Jackson schools a safer place. The next report I'd like to present is our harassment, intimidation, and bullying Up on the screen is a list of all of our anti-bullying specialists assigned to our specific schools. Some of our events and initiatives that took place during Report Period Two, HIB prevention assemblies at every school and grade level, focusing in on explaining when it comes to bad behavior, what we do, and we do not do that here. Classroom lessons and grade-level activities on character education, bucket filling, positive programs, peer mediation, morning announcements, school spirit days, character education groups, social-emotional character education, diversity and equity, parent and student social-emotional evenings, or presentation of mindfulness. District-wide suicide prevention education was conducted, and climate and culture meetings and surveys to strengthen the use of our data to target our programs and approaches. All initiatives that were utilized during the second Report Period. HIB investigations at our elementary level, as I mentioned earlier, there is a breakdown and a comparison there. We did put our alleged numbers up from 2019, which were pre-COVID numbers, as well as our first Report Period from September to December of 2022. And in the far right, all of our confirmed cases, listing 2019 as a comparison and our Report Period One numbers, and our numbers for Report Period Two regarding our confirmed cases. Overall, for Report Period Two, we had a total of 15 confirmed cases for Report Period Two regarding harassment, intimidation, and bullying. At our secondary level, again, our numbers are broken down. At our secondary level, the number of alleged cases for Report Period Two were a total of 25, and we had a total of 18 confirmed cases at the secondary level of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. Some of the motivation of the confirmed HIBs, there were a total of 16 regarding appearance was a motivating factor involved in those cases. Perceived weakness, there were five cases involving perceived weakness. Sexual orientation, a total of five. Gender, one. Race, there were six confirmed HIBs regarding race. Outcomes of all the investigated HIB incidents, some of the consequences and some of the remedial measures that were utilized for Report Period Two are listed up on the screen. Obviously, parent-student conferences, out-of-school suspensions, suspension of privileges, in-school suspensions, some of the remedial measures were counseling, seating changes, mediation, and detention. The location of the confirmed HIB incidents for Report Period Two, 23 of these incidents took place on school grounds. Seven of these incidents were involving cell phones and the internet, and three of the incidents took place on our school buses. Some of the classifications of the actions investigated under Report Period Two, there were incidents of demeaning, offensive text messages, name-calling, offensive comments, mocking, teasing, hitting, kicking, and pushing. School self-assessment grades, as you all know, we are required to calculate and prepare school self-assessment grades each year to grade our district on our anti-bullying efforts. Up on the screen are the eight core elements that our schools graded themselves on. If you read from left to right, those eight core elements are program and approaches, training on policy, other staff instruction and training, CNI curriculum and instruction HIB-related, HIB personnel, HIB reporting procedures, HIB investigation on procedures, and HIB reporting. The maximum score that a school and our district can achieve is 78. And you'll see underneath the eight core elements, the maximum scores for each of those elements. Up on the screen are our elementary schools and the grades that they were able to assess themselves on for this year. Next slide. This slide is our secondary schools, our middle schools and our high schools. Again, eight core elements, maximum scores that are possible, and the maximum overall score for the schools and the district. After calculating all of our scores, our school self-assessment grades for this year, we came up with a score of 70.2. Again, the maximum score is 78. Last year, our district score, our district grade, was 64.9, so we did have an improvement, a noticeable improvement from last year. Much of this is attributed to the fact that some of our ABSs were new to their positions last year, and they were a bit more familiar this year, and were able to identify issues within their schools and address those issues accordingly. And in closing, we're committed to being proactive and prepared. Some of the things going on in our district is behavioral threat assessment training for our staff, behavioral threat assessment teams training for our district and our schools, understanding school violence training. As I mentioned previously, we have adopted the I Love You Guys Foundation Standard Response Protocol. Implementation and training has been conducted in coordination with the New Jersey Department of Education and the OSPEP Office, the Office of School Preparedness and Emergency Planning. We've also adopted the I Love You Guys Foundation Standard Reunification Method, and implementation and training has been conducted, again, in accordance with the Department of Education and the Office of School Preparedness and Emergency Planning. District training at all schools and with our anti-bullying specialists has been conducted. Policies and procedures for addressing and reporting harassment, intimidation, and bullying, violence, and vandalism, and substance use, all has been conducted. And lastly, our anti-bullying coordinator ABS meetings, there has been training that has been going on regarding HIB and threat assessments, and addressing many of the issues that we're seeing in our schools. Be happy to take any questions.
I have a question. Who did the self-assessment for the schools? Was it parents, staff, the administrators, to give the report card grade?
Yeah, typically, it's the anti-bullying specialist in cooperation with the principals. I am involved with the process just to provide guidance. As I mentioned, we did have a number of new anti-bullying specialists who are not familiar with the process. We do take a look at many different factors and many different things that are going on in the school to try to come up with an accurate grade for that school. So there are a number of people involved, but typically, it is the anti-bullying specialist for that particular school. You're welcome.
I just had a question. On the self-assessment, GATS seemed much lower than the other three schools, so do we have any plan in place to bring their assessment higher?
We have. Actually, the score did go up. I do not have last year's score in front of me. I can get that information for you, but I do know that the GATS school did improve from last year, and we are working with the ABS, who again, was new to her role last year, and has gotten more familiar as time has gone on. So we have seen an improvement this year, but obviously, we'd like to improve it quite a bit more. So yes.
Yes, I do have a question. The state of New Jersey recently had its one-year anniversary for legalized marijuana. And we can take a look and see that the vast majority of our substance abuse is marijuana in our schools, and that's gone up in the last 12 months. So in your professional opinion, do you believe that the state legalizing marijuana has contributed to our uptick in cases in our buildings?
It's obviously a factor, Mr. Palmieri. It's kind of hard to ignore. I mean, the numbers don't lie. We've seen an increase. We've all seen the numbers, a noticeable increase from when I was here last presenting in March, a dramatic increase. It was a bit of a surprise, but then again, when you take a look at all the factors involved, the availability of the products on the market, whether it be internet or retail-based stores that are out there, dispensaries that are popping up on a regular basis around the state, the obvious answer is, the more availability of the product being out there, the more it's going to potentially fall into the hands of some of our students.
Yeah, so it's easier to access, you know, this marijuana now because it's legalized and it's just trickling into our buildings.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Can you give a little background? Hi. Can you give a little about I Love You Guys Foundation backgrounds?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
Can you give us a little background on what is I Love You Guys Foundation?
Yeah, see, I Love You Guys Foundation was founded by parents of students who unfortunately lost their lives in school shootings around the country. Additionally, the I Love You Guys Foundation consists of educators from school districts around the country, as well as law enforcement personnel, who have made it their effort now to standardize the response procedures of all schools and organizations around our country. From what I understand, also, there are private organizations that have adopted their response protocols. So they've basically written a book and have written a wonderful template that all school districts can utilize in standardizing their response to critical incidents, emergencies in their school districts, as well as reunification plans, which we have seen on occasion in Ocean County, where districts have been affected, where they've had to implement a reunification at their schools, which can be a daunting process, and training is a major part of that. So our school district became aware of the I Love You Guys Foundation through the New Jersey Department of Education, and back in January of 2022, many of our staff members or administrators went through training, a webinar about five hours long, and it was conducted by a father who had lost his daughter in a school shooting, I believe, out in the state of Colorado back in the early 2000s. So it was a very good training session that we went through. We learned a lot, and there's a lot of valuable information. A lot of the information through the I Love You Guys Foundation, and you could check this for yourselves if you have some free time, is free. A lot of their information is available for us to print and utilize, and they are there to provide ongoing training if we request it. So it's an excellent, excellent program, and we've adopted it, and we began using it last year. We're in year two. We just finished year two, and I plan, and we plan on moving forward with the program. It's an excellent program.
Thank you.
No other questions? Thank you, and have a great summer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maluski. Appreciate the report. So moving on, we also have two more presentations this evening. I'll be doing both. The first one is, we're required to share the results that we've just received on the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. That is basically the graduation assessment that the state has implemented. I'm going to go to the podium for the next two presentations. As I said, this is a report that's required by the Department of Education, this one, and then also, when we receive them, the ELL access scores and our special education DLM scores, which we will report in August on. So tonight, I'll be sharing the NJGPA results. It is a state requirement. As I mentioned, that all 11th-grade students take this assessment. It is designed to measure the extent to which students are graduation-ready in English-language arts and math, similar to, for those of you who had, many, many, many years ago, experienced the HESPA, which was a high school proficiency assessment test. So I often talk about a pendulum in education. Am I getting feedback? Let's try that. Can you still hear me? Too far away, or we're good? Does somebody have a microphone? Maybe I do. Can you check mine?
Your mic on?
Okay, let's try again. Still getting feedback? Okay, stop me if you do. So as I was saying, there's often a pendulum in education. So years ago, there was, a long time ago, there was a high school proficiency assessment called the HESPA in place, and again, it was given to 11th graders to mark whether those students were ready to graduate, if they had received enough information and instruction and retained enough to meet the criteria for graduation. That went away for a long time. We did try, the state implemented other types of assessments, more assessments across grade levels as sort of checkpoints, and now that pendulum has swung back over the last few years, this assessment has been put into place for graduation readiness. So you will see that it is measured on the 10th grade standards for literacy, English-language arts, and it is measured on the mathematical components aligned to Algebra I and geometry. So in May of 2023, we received that the State Board of Education had adopted the new cut scores for this assessment for both math and literacy. So we'll take a look at those in a moment. Students who take this test but do not meet that minimum required of that cut score for either one of those components are considered not ready yet and have other options, and we'll talk about those as well. But they can either retake the assessment the following fall as a senior and senior year for the component that they did not pass or meet that cut score for, and they can also, or they could use a menu of items that are other assessments, such as SAT. There's a whole menu of them that are approved by the State Department of Education, so if they do not meet this criteria, they have other options of other assessments that are standardized that they can take to meet those options, and there's a menu of those things. Let's say they don't meet either one of those. There is also a portfolio appeal process, which is a little bit more extensive, and it requires the collection of information and samples that the students have done under the direction of a teacher. We score that, and we send the score to the state office to demonstrate proficiency in the standards for graduation. We have a tremendous success in using all pathways. Majority of the students do pass the GPA, and then we also have another percentage, and we report all of this out in our state of schools in October, all those percentages and the pathways that students have followed. So the scores you see that we've received, an overall level outcome, you can see the passing scores comparison went from 750 to 725 this year. This test is very new, really not normed well yet, hence they're still adjusting cut scores. So you'll see there for the Jackson School District, in a comparison, 81% of the students were passing this year with a cut score of 725, an increase of 51% for us. In comparison to the state, you'll see there, we are slightly above the state level on that. Obviously, we'd like to see that higher, and we'll continue to achieve and work at those areas. You can never do enough to get more and more students passing and ready for graduation. Mathematics, as we know, has been hit the hardest for the gap years that we've had with the pandemic, and you can see that's true across the state as well. Again, you can see a comparison, very small increase we've had in mathematics, the same with the state, and you can see there that we still have some work in front of us, as does the state, but Jackson specifically has some work in front of them to continue to grow in the areas of Algebra I and geometry with our students, and we've already gone into action for some of that planning. So some of the intervention strategies we have put in place this last year, included an everyday math application class at our middle school level, which students qualified for knowing that they needed the extra support. It was an extra class of mathematics to help them with the skill sets and close some of the gaps. the gaps and identify those areas that they needed to strengthen. And we've found great success with that. And students feeling definitely more confident in their math as well, not only making growth there, but also feeling more confident in tackling the math, which is a big piece of this as well. We did redesign our freshman Algebra I class. We'll continue to look at that and adjust it and tweak it to the standards. We'll look at this data and see where our weak areas were, and we will adjust our curriculum accordingly for both Algebra I and Geometry, so that we can hit those targets better with our students. In literacy, we had a full-year course this past year to address struggling literacy students. We have additional supports during Common Lunch. We are going to continue to expand upon that. Currently, our teams are meeting and talking about what are the opportunities that Common Lunch can help with intervention. A big part of this is also strengthening our ability in our classroom to differentiate and meet the needs of individual students based on what they specifically need to address their, their areas in which they might be less proficient in a, in an area in math. And we continue to use our own district assessment that we house in our linked data warehousing system. When we take our measures, we're going to continue to look at our measures and see how those align with this assessment to make sure they are comparable and aligned so that our district assessment that we, formative assessments we give aligns to this assessment, so that we are speaking the same language and moving the students in the direction towards the success on this assessment as well. This is the subgroup data we're required to report out as well. I'll let that speak for itself there. You can see the higher bar is the higher percentage of students who are graduation-ready. Obviously, we want to see that bar high for every subgroup, and we will continue to strive to do that. That is for mathematics. Literacy, we see we're getting closer to that of having higher populations of every subgroup graduation-ready and at the same level. And we will work hard to achieve that at math as well. Currently, we did place these GPA scores in Genesis and they can be accessed in the parent portal. But in the fall, we will be sending home the actual reports with the seniors in September so that everyone can see the breakdown of their scores. And students who did not qualify graduation-ready, as I said before, will have lots of opportunities to become graduation-ready through other assessments in our portfolio process. And as I said, we will continue to strive to align our curriculum to the assessment and to allow, I still have feedback?
Yeah.
Okay. Not a good night for me with a mic. So we'll continue to adjust accordingly and have our conversations at our grade-level meetings, our department meetings, and to ensure that every student becomes graduation-ready through whatever pathway best suits them. Okay, any questions on that before I transition to the next presentation? Okay, thank you. So up next is wrapping up our district goals and our board goals from the 2223 school year. Just going to give an update to where we ended on all of those goals. I had provided an update mid-year on them. This will bring closure to this. We are currently working, as I mentioned earlier in my superintendent's report, working with the admin team to set our goals, and we'll report out on the new district goals and board goal, conversation will happen at our August board meeting. So in regards to wrapping up, if you recall, the 2223 school year, our focus and our vision was on safety, relationships, instruction, and strengthening our core instruction, bringing back the, the core to what we do after the pandemic and ensuring that we were connecting with our students and having high instruction, all levels happening in the classroom, students feeling safe, and reconnecting to school. We were strengthening the core. And here in Jackson, we not only have a mission statement, but we try to live that mission statement. We practice that mission statement and we put that mission statement in front of our, our staff frequently as a reminder. So it's not just something on a piece of paper, but we work to achieve to this level of our mission statement every year. So that's our core. Our core is there. It's a, you know, you see the, the red and the underlined words there that really demonstrate what we strive to be here in Jackson. So this is, that was obviously our focus for the year and will continue to focus on that every year. That's our core, followed by our district values and beliefs. There again, I've just highlighted, you've seen these before, I highlighted some key words of how important some of these things we know for our well-rounded education are, these beliefs and values to our education system. And again, we strive to do all of these every day with our students and have the strongest, well-rounded academic program for our students. This again, you saw in the beginning of the school year last year as how it all fits together in order to have the highest growth academically for students is that they feel safe, they have relationships and feel connection, and strong instruction will lead to higher academic growth. Our basic needs, think about Maslow's hierarchy. So our first goal of safety for the 2223 school year was focused on our facilities and physical safety. I'm not going to read this, you've seen these before. So these were some of the things that we were, the activities we were aiming to do related to the safety goal. So here is a sampling of some of the things we did to address those goals there. I'm just going to pick out a few just to talk about. You can read the rest. And again, this is just a sampling. We did much more than just this. But as you just heard from Mr. Maluski, the standard response protocol was a big part of what we did this year. We rolled that out for the entire staff and trained on it and put it into practice. This year, we also worked with the New Jersey Office of School Emergency Planning and Preparedness. We had a representative from that organization, from the state office, come visit two of our schools to observe two lockdown drills and also to assess our entire building safety reason-wise and purpose-wise. We held feedback meetings with, with this representative from the School Emergency Planning and Preparedness Office, and we also took that feedback and turnkeyed it to our entire administrative staff. In fact, we just brought it up again recently this week in our, in our trainings. So it was very valuable and very helpful for us. A big piece of what we've done this year too is address the behavioral threat assessment process in our district. It is a required, is now a state law that it is required to have a, have behavioral threat assessment teams in every building and to train all of them and to train our staff. I'm happy to say we were ahead of that curve over a year, and we have a solid process form and absolute solid process in place right now to assess threats of safety within our schools for mental health or physical safety. Our curriculum instruction goals for the 2223 school year revolved around curriculum and relationship building. And for students, these were some of the things that we knew we were going to be focused in on. And by way of update, you'll see some of the things here listed, again, some of the things that we've done. I'll just point out responsive classroom is an approach we use pre-K through grade eight to help students connect to their peers, to goal set, to take ownership of their learning. We continue to emphasize that, and we've also just done a new refresher training this June on that since we have a lot of new staff. We've also, as you well know, implemented the Common Lunch period to allow students to, again, to reconnect to each other, have opportunities to participate in some extracurriculars during the day, and also to get some intervention or support or enrichment during that time with their teachers. We're going to continue to work on that. The first year was successful, but we still have some work to do to ensure that students are reaching out and getting some interventions that they need during that time. And we continued with all of our academies. It's another wonderful thing we have here in Jackson. Again, a high interest level. It's helping to engage students into academics through their area of interest. And Jackson does, has an excellent model of that in both of our high schools of several academies. So in way of student engagement, you know, I've mentioned some of those things in the last slide, but we've also done many other things related to helping our students engage in school. One of the things after the pandemic, getting back into being able to hands-on, work collaboratively with a group, problem-based learning, putting a project or a problem in front of students and letting them work through that and figure out what information they need to know to solve that problem. So we did a lot of refocusing our staff on those good practices we've known in the past and bringing them back to the forefront and making sure they're happening in the classroom to, again, engage students into what they're, they're learning on a daily basis. We've also had a new science curriculum adoption with new resources that is very hands-on, discovery learning, and that was implemented this year, trained on and implemented in a huge success. Both students and staff love this curriculum and see wonderful engagement in science and good science, strong dialogue happening. And just a sample of what we've done. Instructional rigor is always a focus. These are some of the things that we have done to address rigor within our classrooms and our instruction. We've done a lot of training this year, training on differentiation within the classroom. We've done training related to fraction sense. Fraction tends to be, we know from our data, a tough area for students. So we've really, we brought in some expert trainers on that. Again, seeing the staff and the students, lots of hands-on materials, real-life application, really engaging students, but at a higher level of thinking and problem-solving to create that rigor in the curriculum. So we've done a lot of work there this year. We're going to continue to expand on that. And then you see some of the other areas there, particularly, we know we have an increased English Language learner population. We did a lot of training on PSYOP, which is sheltered in place instruction, which helps our teachers know how to make accommodations, but also still keep the level of instruction high for those students. The homeschool connection was another goal, always to connect with our families and our communities. And we always do a lot in this area. This is a sampling of some of the things that we've done. I'll just point out, we did an extension this year of many more Title I family nights for our English Language population, so that those families felt more connected and better understood the school system and how it operated. We did a lot of family nights at the preschool level. Again, great way, new families to our district. We wanted to get them in, understand our programs, understand our schools, and that was very successful. And we also launched a family engagement webinar series. That was successful too. Although the parents didn't attend the actual night that it happened, there was lots of hits afterwards. You can see views of who, who's watched those family engagement nights, videos, those webinars rather, so that they were, they were viewed afterwards. And we tend to find that that seems to be a very successful way now to get information out and allow people to view things when they have the opportunity at home. So we're doing more and more of that of maybe offering it live and then recording it and posting it, or just doing it a virtual and recording it and allowing it to be posted for people to see it at their leisure. We did a lot of messaging. We try to keep our community informed. You know, all of the budget information we pushed out. We try to push out as much information as we can proactively. It's always something we strive to be better at, but we certainly do push out a lot of information to our community. One thing that we did different this year to showcase the wonderful things that happen in our buildings on a daily basis in individual classrooms. So we try to capture as much as we can, and you've seen some of the slides that we've tried to put together. Mr. Irwin does a nice job of getting that information up on the slides for board meetings. But again, the beauty of that is we're reaching, being able to showcase more schools, more things happening, but also to record it and keep it posted for people to see after the fact, so that if they don't have the opportunity to see it tonight, they have the opportunity to see it posted of all the wonderful things that, that do happen. Human Resources goal this year was a lofty. There was one huge massive lofty goal the entire district took on. You know, for over 10 years, we had a management system outsourced for substitutes. And kudos to Mr. Boginsky, the HR office, everybody involved at the district level and our school level, doing recruiting, letting people know that we were now going to be doing our own substitute management system way back when that used to happen. You know, again, I talk about that pendulum, right? So now we're back to where the school district is taking on managing all of their own substitutes. And that's a big undertaking, especially when we are, we're, you know, we're shorthanded. We've had a lot of budget cuts. So it was extremely successful. Lots of people interested from our community wanted to be substitutes, and we were able to have substitutes for absences that we were not able to do over the last four or five years. We really were able to fill a lot of them. We had a great turnout, a great success, and we're happy to say that we're going to continue in this path. So finance, transportation, and facilities, a lot going on there as well. The goals this year were really to focus in on our budget situation and transportation, continuing to make that as efficient as possible, to run as smoothly as possible, and continue to, again, recruit as many drivers and bus aides as we could. So I'm happy to say for the preschool, we, all of our preschool playgrounds are now installed. Lots of them were, the preschoolers were able to use them in the spring. We're still working on Rosenhour. There was a little bit of a hiccup over there, just where it was being placed and having to level the ground, but it is in the works and that should be ready in the fall for our preschoolers. So that was very exciting for them. The budget situation, obviously, we did a lot of work in that area, as you all know. We put out lots of information, testified at assembly and senate committee meetings, lots of conversation and dialogue with anybody who would listen to us about the situation. We met with the Department of Education, shared with them what is happening here and why. We sought grant opportunities everywhere we possibly could. We continue to do that so that we can keep our stellar programs and expand and be innovative. Just recently, you know, last board meeting, I mentioned the mental health grant that we just got. You can see just, that's just a sampling of some of the grants that we were able to obtain. There are many, many more than that. And kudos to my staff, our entire staff here, who constantly seeks out these, these grants. And we continue to review our transportation department for efficiency, safety, and obviously smooth transport to and from school. So that was our, an update and then closure to our 2223 school goals and some of the samplings of what we did to meet those goals. There were also district Board of Education goals that the board set, and they're listed here. I won't read them all, but we had the fiscal goal, obviously related to our budget and being able to have a responsible budget and be able to meet the needs of our district with the continued S2 cuts. There was the curricular goal, which was to monitor the district's commitment to the opportunities to, for students to achieve at high levels. Communication, very much in line with ensuring that we get information out to our community at board meetings and through email blasts and phone blasts. Utilizing the committee structure, I think, with the board has been very successful. You all reporting out at the board meeting of the committees is very helpful for the public to hear what's going on in the district. So I appreciate that all of that has been working smooth, continue to use the chain of command so that we can get to deal with issues to the closest place where they are happening by following the chain of command and ensuring that we're sharing that with our community as a whole. And then finally, the last goal is to always review mid-year and end-of-year the status of the board goals. So by way of update, these are some of the things and the areas that we, the actions we took to address those goals. Obviously, the letter writing campaign for the bill A4461 for non-public transportation was a big piece of communicating that and getting that out and supporting it. The advocacy, draw attention to the budget crisis to educate all of the stakeholders to better understand what is happening here in Jackson related to the lack of state aid. Going through the budget meetings, the board was very much involved, many, many, many budget meetings. We appreciate that. And then the October state of schools, address all the areas of the things happening in the school curriculum, instruction, and assessment-wise. We'll continue to do that. And then the board meetings, they continue to be livestreamed for our community and so that the community can see them after the fact as well. And the district highlights, as we mentioned earlier, at the board meetings, and you all had a review mid-year, and this is your final review on the 2223, 23 district goals. So obviously, we always work to achieve more and to do better. So we focus in on goals. That gives us a direction. Doesn't mean that's the only, the only work we're doing. We obviously do much more than that, but despite our fiscal challenges, our district is strong. We're working hard to help our students feel comfortable here. We're working hard to help our students feel comfortable here, feel connected here, and achieve at high levels, and we will continue to do that. Are there any questions? So I just wanted to mention in conclusion to my superintendent's report, you may have seen it on the district website or the screen behind us when you came in, but Ryan Lasko, he was a 2020 graduate from Memorial, was just drafted to the Oakland, Oakland A's, right? Oakland A's. Pretty exciting news. I just always like to end on a positive note, so congratulations to him, and that's exciting news for one of our graduates. That concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Primili.
Twenty twenty.
At this time, we will have our discussion items for our standing committees. These are committees that met throughout our last board meeting till now. We have Buildings and Grounds chaired by Ms. Rivera. Would you report?
Yes, the following are completed projects. Liberty had hot water heater repaired at football stadium mechanical room. McCalliff hot water heater repaired for school and kitchen. Switlick gutters and downspouts cleared of debris. Administrative building gutters and downspouts cleared of debris. Get's HVAC program and mechanical room electrical systems transferred to emergency generator by in-house electricians. Memorial, the tennis courts, the contractor installed the new courts, repaired cracks that occurred on the playing fields. The district plumbing project updates, is Johnson Elementary completed and Holman Elementary in progress. The preschool playgrounds update, all are completed except for Rosenhour, that's still in progress.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. And while I have you, you also chair the state and county school board, so would you like to report on that as well?
Yes, the next meeting, next county meeting, will be September 27th at the Clarion Hotel at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you. And we have our advocacy committee, which I'm excited to say this was the first meet of this newly advised committee. So Ms., the Chair President, Ms. Gardella, would you like to report?
Yes, it was an exciting meeting. The four of us came together to come up with the purpose of the new committee, so I'll read that to you guys. The advocacy committee is an ad hoc committee with the goal of providing resolutions that will advance local and statewide legislation, policy, and funding to ensure continued student achievement, accountability, and academic standards. The board committee will highlight legislation at board meetings and request support for advocacy from interested community members who are willing to attend legislative meetings and communicate broadly to the Jackson community. So basically, you know, we're going to use a lot, the School Board Association gives a lot of legislative updates from the state, so that's a good sounding, starting place for this committee. Basically, we're going to be reviewing those school board bullets and determining what would be applicable to our town and our students. Some of the things that we'd like to do is obviously advocate for our kids. We'd like to be able to include community members from Jackson as well as other school district school boards. We feel that's appropriate, being a county-based advocacy, because constituent votes matter with legislators. So some of our projects that we're going to highlight is, obviously, everybody's aware of our budget situation and the presentation of a vote for a question to the public in November, so that will be something that we'll be discussing and putting a group together to advocate for. Basically, we determined that we're going to review four bills presented to legislation, and we're going to convene shortly to determine what kind of projects and getting community members to participate. If anybody wants to read in advance, it's Bill S. 3950-A5575, and that establishes exemption from state and school aid reductions for certain school districts. A4011 is a direct, the Commissioner of Education, to establish a three-year pilot program to increase reading levels of certain students and appropriates $1 million. A5412, which is establishing a non-public school transportation program to provide funding to consortiums of non-public schools that will assume responsibility for mandated non-public school busing. And S4027, which requires the Commissioner of Education to establish a matching grant program for certain school districts and schools using federal funds to increase instructional time and accelerate learning. So we're excited, and we'll meet again, and hopefully we report again in August.
Fantastic, thank you. I need a motion for approval of Policy and Regulations, second reading.
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barocas?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
And Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
I need a motion for approval of the minutes, the closed session meeting, June 28th, 2023, and the official board meeting, June 28th, 2023, business meeting.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barocas?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
And Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
I need a motion for approval of the bill list.
Motion. Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barocas?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
And Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
I need a motion to open the public forum on agenda items only. We will hold another public forum during this meeting for other questions. This public forum will be for questions on the agenda only.
Motion. Second.
Please sign in and state your name and whether or not you are a Jackson resident. Each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on the topic until all others have been heard. Agenda items only, if anybody would like to come up. Right. Seeing no one come forward, I need a motion to close public forum.
Motion.
All in favor? All right. I need a motion to move facilities.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barocas?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
And Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri, if we can go back to finance for...
Oh, that was facilities?
Finance, that was facilities.
I need a motion to move finance.
Motion. Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barocas?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
I need a motion to move programs.
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
I'd like to have a discussion on number one.
What number?
One. It's the travel-related, am I on? The travel-related and expense reimbursement resolution. Our resolution, the last statement be further resolved, the Board of Education approves the maximum travel expenditure amount for the 2324 school year at $130,000, which the school district shall not exceed. And the maximum travel expenditure amount for 2223 was $130,000, and the amount spent as of June 30 was $71,000. Is that necessary, knowing that we didn't spend that amount of money to have it budgeted for double or just about double?
I can, I can answer that. So there's, there's two reasons for that. The first reason is the state just let us know that they increased the, the travel expense now. It's gone up to 47 cents per mile, which is a pretty significant increase for us. And then the second fold is this year, coming up to 2324, we have, you know, had significant staffing cuts, and we have many, many more staff who are now shared between buildings and will be doing more traveling. So we need, we're not really sure how much all, everything's going to cost, so we wanted to keep that safety net. Hopefully, it's under that, but those were the two reasons why we kept it the same.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Primili, if I could just add that it's never been, we've never gone over that number. It's better to have that number in place so that we don't go over it, because it's just, it's a, the testing that we have every three years, it's part of that, to not go over that, so we make sure.
Any additional discussion on programs? Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barocas?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
And Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
I need a motion to move students.
Motion. Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barocas?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
And Mr. Palmieri?
Yes.
I need a motion to move personnel.
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
On item number 10, with the paraprofessional stipend, I'm just curious, obviously, some staff members have the stipend and some do not. I don't want to make an assumption, but is that a preschool stipend?
No, it's not just preschool. It is for, there's a big portion of it that's preschool, absolutely, for toileting. We do have some special needs students who are not preschool who also need toileting. And it's also for some of our paraprofessionals who work in our very extreme behavioral classrooms.
Any other discussion on personnel? Roll call.
Mrs. Gardella?
Yes.
Mr. McCarron?
Yes.
Mrs. Barocas?
Yes.
Dr. Osman?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
And Mr. Palmieri?
Abstain number 11, yes, all else. I need a motion to open public forum on any topic pertaining to the Board of Education.
Second.
Please sign in and state your name, and whether or not you are a Jackson resident, each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on the topic until all others have been heard.
Hi, Megan Calabrese. I am a Jackson resident for about eight and a half years now. Transportation was spoken about, but this particular thing was not mentioned, and I was not able to make the last meeting. I'm one of the parents that you're taking away cul-de-sac busing from. I attended the meeting on June 12th, received email from Mr. Soto that he was not changing his mind. I have sent emails back and gotten no response, so I'm here tonight. I'm trying to figure out how it's safer. I have a video of a bus that came down my block this morning. It was a J's Bus Service. It was for the non-public Orthodox children that live up the block from me. They came down my cul-de-sac absolutely no problem, no backing up, no reversing needed. They went around, they picked up the students, they went back out. I'm sorry, public speaking's not my thing. I get a little bit jumbled when I'm trying to do it. I've been told numerous times by both Ms. Primili and Mr. Soto that my children won't have to be crossing the busy road of Bennett's Mills, which is where my cul-de-sac is located off of, and I'd like to know how that's possible. I've never been given any sort of response or answer for that, because either way, whether it's in the morning or afternoon, I have three children, two in McCalliff, one in Crawford. They're going to have to be crossing it at some point. I'm, I apologize. I'm really terrible at this. I don't know, I just, my bus stop on my street has been the same for 20 years. It was the same for my neighbor's students who are all graduated college now. I'm well aware that there are 24 bus routes that were awarded to, or I don't know if that's the correct word, to the non-public students, which I'm assuming means 24 buses were taken away from the public students. And the only way that this is being fixed, from what I can find, I've looked up numerous articles, I've spoken to numerous school districts, oh, that was something I wanted to say, I have spoken to numerous school districts who have told me flat out that they are responsible for those children door-to-door, not just when they get on the bus to when they get off the bus. And I just want to know how this is going to be resolved. I want to know how we can all work together, and you can listen to the parents that are fighting this. I understand I'm the only one here tonight. The only other parents that I'm friendly with that are in the position as me are unfortunately working and unable to be here tonight, so I'm here speaking for all of us. I just need to know what resolutions are going to be. I need to know how the school board and the Jackson district is going to work with us, because I don't feel safe letting my seven, my nine-year-old and my neighbor's seven-year-old daughter cross a busy street. I watched three cars fly through a bus stop sign on County Line Road a few weeks ago, and the bus was stopped for at least 30 seconds to a minute before those cars flew through the stop sign. I don't feel safe, and nobody's responding to that. I guess that's all I really have to say at this point.
Thank you. Yeah, you can sit down, sure. I can, I can assure you that any bus, private bus routes that were created and bid on and awarded, they will follow the same rules as our transportation department. If they were not, if they're privately hired and they're not a part of the routes that we bid and that were awarded, we can't hold those buses accountable because they're not, you know, awarded through us, to answer that question. The other question, the routes that were bid and awarded, they're not taking away from Jackson school students. Those are private buses. We have our own Jackson transportation department, so it's not less buses for any of our Jackson students. I will defer to Ms. Primili for your question in regards to not getting back to you and have her provide you some feedback as well.
Thank you, and that is accurate. It's, there's none of the, our buses being used for next school year with the non-public. They're all awarded to outside vendors. In regards to the email that you sent, did you not receive a follow-up email?
No.
Okay, okay. Okay, well, I was under the assumption we did. I thought I saw something, but let me...
We attempted to do the 12th meeting.
Yep.
And told all the camera type players that evening, seeing that was just sort of our hat addresses, and he would take a walk or do whatever he had to do to make his decisions.
Correct.
And basically, the email that I received back about, maybe two weeks later, was basically telling me, oh, well, we're not changing anything, or we do. I responded to that email twice. I know I have looked at that for two or possibly three emails, and we've gotten responses to that.
I'll look into that. You know, it is, I understand that you're looking for a response, and I'm not trying to make any excuses, but, you know, it's been busy and we're just catching our breath now, so I'm sure there will be some follow-up emails if somebody else emailed and didn't receive a response. You know, I know Mr. Soto, I believe, looked at the route. I'll ask him to relook at the route, but, you know, we'll take a look one more time. We'll take a look at what you've just said. As far as any other bus turning around in a cul-de-sac, that's up to those individual bus vendors. That's not something that I'm, we're recommending, and it...
...that is one of our buses. I don't know if it was for that. I know J's is a private service. My point was, there's numerous buses that run out of my block effort that I have a new person on, all the students on my street, and they all turn around in my cul-de-sac without the need to reverse the students out of us. It is not an issue in my shirt. And I, it's also a little convenient that the guys are putting that in that mile rule that it is more than a half mile from our bus stop to the new house, and all of us are just shy of having that mile on. I think I was like .48 from my children's bus stop where it is now to the new one on Ashon Bennett's.
So obviously, and I've said this to you before when we were at our June meeting, is that we're not looking to, you know, cause any distress to anybody. We're trying to be consistent with applying a rule, so I'll follow up with you afterwards. I'll give you a call tomorrow, and we can talk a little further about, about your concerns, and I'll take a look at the route myself, but I'll be honest, if it's within that mile, we're not going to be sending another van down, but I'll take a look at some of the safety... not going to be sending another van down. But I'll take a look at some of the safety concerns that you had.
I have grandchildren who are going to school. We don't know how they're going to get out.
So maybe we'll talk tomorrow, give you a call, okay?
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
I don't like microphones. I'm sorry. All right, I'm just going to keep it there. Hopefully, I'm loud enough. Can you hear me? Okay. First off, I want to say I will be attending more of these. I've been a resident of Jackson for over 16 years. I've raised my children through all of the schools, and I now have two high school kids, which is hard to believe. The reason I'm here tonight is there's a group of us parents. We understand that the gymnastics program for the girls was canceled, canceled, it had to be cut due to budget cuts. We have been working diligently to try and fund that ourselves. I was asked to come here tonight to let you guys know that we are actively working on getting those funds available. But one of the questions that came up was if the Board is amenable to us cutting one of the coaches and taking on the transportation costs ourselves to help reduce the amount that we would need to raise. I believe the original amount that was given to us was around $20,000. If we took those costs out, we would be able to raise about $10,000, and we think that's something, oh, God, I think that's something that we could do. We are under a very tight deadline, but we've got a bunch of dedicated parents who have been doing nothing but trying to raise funds for the last four days. I drove here from Cherry Hill to get here on time to represent and let you guys know that this is really important to us and the girls that have worked really, really hard. And so I wanted to suggest that proposal. I'm not sure what the protocol is, if that's something that has to be approved or sent on email, but I did want to let you guys know that we do understand the budget cuts, understand all of the restraints we're under. But we also have girls that have worked really, really hard for this, and we, as parents, will do whatever we need to do to, to make it happen. But we're looking for a few concessions.
Well, thank you. Certainly, we can take a look at what we can do and have a conversation. So I'll speak with Mr. Bukinsky, who oversees athletics, and our athletic director, and we'll reach out in regards to what are some things that we can see if we can work on to lower the cost a little bit.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? Seeing no one come forward, I need a motion to close public forum.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now going to go to Board Comments, and I will start with Ms. Gardella.
I just wanted to highlight our Energy Education Specialist. He applied and got accepted for two awesome grants that we didn't necessarily highlight. One was the Security Initiative, and the other was for a grant that provided up to 100% of costs associated with planning, preparation, trees, planting, watering, and monitoring for over a three-year period. And I just think that's really exciting for us, and I wanted to say thank you to that person.
I think I'm working. Oh, there we go. Thanks for coming out tonight. I know it's difficult to get out here during the summer. Good luck with the gymnastics team. We're kind of rooting for you.
Just wanted to thank everybody for coming out and have a good rest of the summer. Thank you.
I just want to say I'm happy to see that the, the girls in gymnastics are fundraising diligently, and hopefully some of our other teams as well throughout the year are going to do the same fundraising. I just wanted to thank everyone else for coming out tonight, especially those sitting in the back. I'm sorry, we don't have that many seats. Maybe next month we will. But again, thanks for coming out.
I want to thank you all for coming in person on livestream, the informative presentations and dialogue, and everyone have a safety...
I just want to thank everyone for coming as well, and everyone who got up to speak. We always do appreciate the feedback from the community. Other than that, I hope everyone has a good and safe evening, and we'll see you next month.
I would like to thank everyone for their comments and questions and for coming out and being here. And for those watching livestream, thank you. I would like to extend a thank you to our administrators. I think sometimes it goes unnoticed that our administrators work all year long, even in the summertime. They're here, and they are preparing a way for a smooth transition for all of our students in the fall, and they put countless hours during the summertime. And I wanted to extend a thank you from, you know, Ms. Permili, her entire staff, all of our school, you know, principals and, and leaders that are here, making sure that when our students arrive in, in September, they get the best opportunities and education possible. So thank you for your diligently and your work ethic. Have a good evening. Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
By acclamation, meeting adjourned.